Good evening. I'm glad to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the October 10, 2017, School Board Meeting to order. On behalf of my colleagues, I would like to thank all of you who are in attendance with us in person or watching the meeting from another location for investing your time and energy to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Present.
Thank you, Pam. This evening, I would like to ask Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Blackburn the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members. Ms. Duskovich?
I would like to start off by recognizing Mr. Judd Kaminski, the principal at Palm Bay High School. It seems like I have spent a lot of time with him lately. Dr. Blackburn and I did a school visit and spent a few hours with him and then with his staff. And the staff was very -- what's the word I'm looking for? They're very well-connected there. They are a family, they are a team, and they presented well, and they reported back to us on what a great environment that Mr. Kaminski has set for them. And even within the last school board meeting, I've also been there for a community meeting that he put together there for community leaders, which was impressive, and they were able to discuss some of the needs of the students in the area and bring together church leaders from the area, business leaders from the area, and I was impressed with what he pulled together. And then we had a rezoning meeting also at his school, which he hosted. And with that, I want to give a shout-out to the Palm Bay High Culinary Club or the Culinary Academy because those children put out an amazing spread of food for all the attendees there, which I didn't even -- wasn't aware that we had. They have a marine ROTC, and those children are very impressive doing the flag ceremony. So a shout-out to all of them from Palm Bay High. Also, Dr. Blackburn and I visited Palm Bay Elementary and Port Malabar Elementary, and both of those schools were doing extremely well. We met with teachers at both schools. And Palm Bay Elementary, especially this year, our school visit was just knock it out of the park. Wonderful. They've had, in past years, they've had, I think they said, 25 dads show up for Dad Bring Your Child to School Day, and this year, they had 150 dads show up for Bring Your Child to School Day. And, you know, that touched my heart, and I think Dr. Blackburn's too, if I can't speak for him greatly when they reported that in our visit. So a shout-out to all of Palm Bay Elementary School and the great work they're doing this year to engage parents and engage the community. Also want to give a shout-out to Kevin Thornton, our Food Services Manager. He has taken a lot of time over the last couple of weeks to meet with me and work on helping our menu become even healthier and bring in some items that I think will be a great satisfaction to parents to see that their children are eating that. And so hopefully, you'll see some things roll out over the next few months to improve school lunches even more. Also to Brevard Schools Foundation, they put on a State of the School Breakfast last Friday morning, and they had some big community leaders there to thank them for all of their support of Brevard Schools Foundation and in turn, our district. So thank you to them for putting that on.
Excellent job, Ms. Duskovich. Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, had a very extreme, very successful town hall at Merritt Island High School this last week. Dr. Blackburn gave a great presentation. We had some great interaction with the community. So special thanks to Matt Reed, Deborah Foley, and the team who put that portion of it together. Merritt Island High School, Molly Vega, Jeremy LeBrun, and their team ran a great program, and thanks to them for opening up their doors to us. Couple people that really made an impact, I thought, and Ms. Duskovich mentioned the marine ROTC units, unit that she was fortunate enough to see. Colonel Scott Wagner is the head of the JROTC at Merritt Island, runs an incredible program, and every time I see their cadets doing the flag ceremony at the beginning of any event, it's always perfect and really inspires just a true sense of reflection into what the flag means. So I really thank Scott and his entire team. And we had Cocoa High Culinary provide us with some amazing food prior to the event. Chef Knight and his team put together a Pan Asian meal that included all kinds of different things, from spring rolls to dumplings and just a variety of stuff. But just amazing what the kids are doing, and when I talked to Chef during the night, he was telling me how he had such a big turnover this year, and most of the kids are brand-new to the program, and he's still trying to get them involved in just in the safety issues and some other things. He did relay one thing where there was a young man who had just joined the program four days prior. He had left the autobody program, called Chef and said, "Hey, I want to be a chef." And so he said, "Okay, you can come and join me." And the night before that event, he was with Chef until 10:30 at night prepping for the next, for the food for the next day. So the type of commitment that our teachers and our leadership are inspiring in our students is just extraordinary, and so I think that's a great example for our district. Had each opportunity along with Dr. Blackburn, Mr. Ziegler, Ms. Duskovich, and myself, attended Saturn Elementary's 50th Anniversary Celebration last Friday. Principal Janice Rutherford put together an awesome program. Joni Slosson is the music teacher, and she threaded some amazing performances from each of the different grade levels through a past, present, and future look at Saturn, and it really was really cool. I mean, the music that she wrote, the songs that she had written herself, you could tell the kids were just thrilled to perform for her and for us, and so it was really fun just to see that. And the school looks awesome even after 50 years. Just amazing work that the custodial staff and everybody's doing there. At that event was a gentleman who we are going to recognize a little later, but Mr. Richard Myers was there, and we were joking because his retirement is up for vote tonight, and I told him we were going to vote no, that he's not allowed to go, but I just want to recognize Richard and thank you for your service to our district and to our children and everything you've meant here. So thank you. One thing that happened in the last couple of weeks, and hopefully, everybody's been able to see it, but the announcement of Blue Ribbon Schools, Blue Ribbon School Program, huge thing across our country. 342 schools recognized nationwide. That's both public and private. 12 schools were in the state of Florida, recognized in the state of Florida. Three of those 12 were in Brevard County, and they were Manatee with Principal Brown, Stevenson with Principal Michael Cornot, and Edgewood with Principal Jackie Ingrada. Amazing work. I mean, just to think that that percentage of the schools in Florida are here, right here in Brevard County. I thank each and every one of you for your leadership and what you bring to our community. And I think Dr. Blackburn even mentioned at our town hall that of the 12, there are eight that are at the top of the top Blue Ribbon, and all three of ours are in that top eight. So congratulations to all of you. Last thing is, we have one more retirement on here that she is not here to join us, but I do want to mention Hila Mercer, who is retiring from Endeavor this week. And I just want to thank her personally for all that she's given to this district. Her work at Cambridge and her work at Endeavor has made a huge difference in the Cocoa Community, and so I wish her the very best in all she does going forward, and thank you, Hila, for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Mr. Ziegler?
So last week was, I believe, like National Walk to School Day, and I joined Central Middle School for their Stomp Out Bullying Walk from the West Melbourne Police Department all the way to Central Middle School, in a little bit of rain. So I was proud of those kids for not running and hiding, or I forgot the umbrella. Some people were smart and actually thought ahead. Thank you to Police Chief Wiley for joining us on that walk, and Dr. Sullivan for coming out also to West Melbourne. Thank you very much. And thank you to the West Melbourne Police Department for doing a great job of escorting and protecting those kids as we blocked traffic in West Melbourne there for quite a while. I'm sure those people weren't happy, but the police department did a fantastic job, and I understand, too, that they are the ones that arranged for Chick-fil-A sandwiches for all the kids. So West Melbourne Police stepped up in a big way. Thank you to them.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Mr. Susan?
I also attended the Walk Your Kid to School Day, but my daughter refused to go to school on a walk with me because she loves her bus driver so much that she had to ride with Mr. Jim. So I got to follow the bus all the way to school and then wait in the parking lot while she got off because she literally loves getting on that bus that much. And so I walked into school and everything else, but that was my Walk Your Kid today, and I found out when I was, you know, at that morning that that was going to happen. I also wanted to say thank you to Vieira High School and Dr. Blackburn for our town hall success over here. Matt Reed and Ms. Foley and Mr. Alba, the ability to get into the community, show out, and then have the responses, and then Dr. Blackburn had already put those into an Excel spreadsheet, was talking to me today about how we can implement the changes that were set inside that meeting. So that was pretty impressive, and I just wanted to say thank you for doing that, Dr. Blackburn. I also wanted to say a shout-out to Mr. Carl Brown. One funny story is, is that my wife used to work for Mr. Brown and told me how great of a guy he was and how he was so awesome and he's this. So when I was running for office, I said, "Oh, I'm going to be able to go over there and, you know, hit the parents and everything else." And I looked over, and the first day I walked up, I had all my literature, and he says, "Hey, come over here." And I said, I walked over to him, like, "This is it. He's going to let me talk to everybody." He goes, "Walk across that sidewalk, I'm going to have you arrested." And for the rest of the time, he kept me at bay the whole time. I mean, if I would have touched a blade of grass on the other side, but I probably would have gone to jail. But I also wanted to say, one other, I also wanted to say, one other thing is, is that one fact that they didn't say is that Manatee is the only non-choice school to be selected inside that group. And I asked Carl, I said, "Can you look to see nationwide?" Because I'm trying to look inside the thing, and I would argue that it's one of the only non-choice nationwide, which is phenomenal, and that's my school right there, and that's Carl Brown. Thank you, man. And then the other individual that's retiring tonight that I would, I mean, I'll make the motion if you want to to keep him here, is Mr. Myers. And we got together on the Insurance Advisory Committee, and I saw for the first time a guy that I had never met before as a teacher. I saw this administrator who had the best interests of the individuals in mind that worked for this district. And it's, and everybody has that, but he goes above and beyond in multitude of different ways to show that service. And the next thing that I wanted to say about him was, is that if you've ever had the opportunity to learn about a person, you go into their office, and you can see what they put up on their walls and everything else. And if anybody's ever been into Mr. Myers' office, they can say that it's an ADHD heaven because there is more stuff on the walls and on the seats and everything else. It's going to literally take six months to move that room from the other thing. But I just want to say thank you for all of your service and everything that you do for us. Thank you so much, Mr. Myers. I really appreciate it. That's all I have, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Blackburn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board took all of the great comments, so I definitely want to ditto everything that the board mentioned. Want to extend a special thank you to all of the staff members and community members who have been coming out to our town hall discussions. Our last scheduled town hall is this Thursday with Scorp's at Satellite Beach High School, so please come on out if you have not shared opinions with us. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I am participating with the American Cancer Society of Brevard to raise dollars for that effort, and real men do wear pink, not just, "There you go, Mr. Craig, real men do wear pink." And just either participate in the effort, or if you know any person or any family member or friend of a person that is going through the fight, know what that's like. My father passed away from double cancer several years ago, so know what that fight is like. Give a shoulder, give a pep talk, or give resources to help with the research. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. I have just a couple. First, we added Dr. Blackburn to your schedule, another town hall meeting on November 2nd at Titusville High School to reach those folks that we weren't able to reach the last time. So I'm sure Tammy has already added it, but just wanted to put it out there, any of the North End folks, November 2nd, Titusville High School, 5:30 PM. Hope to see you there.
Tammy tells me to go.
I figured as much. Also want to say a big thank you to Titusville Police Department. I'm not able to join them tomorrow because I'm actually here for a charter application interview, but they are hosting, every single year, they host for our school administrators a breakfast reception, get-to-know-you event, just to build those relationships and thank them for all that they do. So many thanks to TPD for all of the work that they do with our schools and all of the support that they provide. They really are an amazing partner in the North End of the county. Also wanted to say thank you to Mr. Reed. He has been working hard on a new concept called Brevard Watch, which is our very own television show, and he had me in last week to do an interview for the show along with Mr. Kendall Moore on some of the various issues facing our community. So keep an eye out for that on our social media and webpage to introduce yourselves to Brevard Watch. I think it's going to be an interesting, interesting project for the district. And then lastly, I just wanted to share with my fellow board members and Dr. Blackburn, of course, that I attended my first orientation into my Leadership Florida Education Program two weekends ago, I think, I've lost track. Phenomenal group of people, wonderful, wonderful conversation, and it's a mixed group. The Commissioner of Education is one of our hosts. There were three or four school board members throughout the state of Florida, three or four superintendents from throughout the state of Florida, Teachers of the Year, Instructional Coaches, Business Partners, or Partners in Education, I'm supposed to call them. So really great mix, all talking about how do we work together to make education in Florida better. And we looked at everything from professional learning to human capital management to what are other countries doing in education that seem to be making a difference for their students. So some really great dialogue, and I'm looking forward to continuing to build that relationship and expand our learning. I will get out to you all some notes from our discussion so that you have them in case you want to refer to them. But great experience, and I thank you for supporting me and participating. Anyone have anything else? All right, then that, I believe, takes us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, seven consent items, two action items, and one information item. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There were revisions to Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations. Revisions were also made to Item F9 on meeting minutes, Item F10 on student expulsions, Item F12 on instructional staff, Item F13 on facility use agreement and tenant improvements for North Area Adult Education at EFSC, as well as a revision to Item G16 on department school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Thank you, Mrs. Belford. There are seven administrative staff members for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler to approve the administrative staff recommendations. Is there any discussion? And the motion passes 5-0.
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, at this time, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome and recognize Mr. Richard Myers, principal at Kennedy Middle School, on his upcoming retirement effective January 5, 2018. Mr. Myers, we appreciate everything you have done for us throughout your career here with Brevard Public Schools and the entire district. Mr. Myers?
I want to thank Dr. Blackburn and members of the board for allowing me to be a part of this great Brevard County educational system for over 45 years. It's been truly a blessing to me, and I particularly recognize, thank John and Matt for their potential no vote that they could have cast there. God has really blessed me with some very wonderful support, both from the district and from my school, and in particular, Stephanie Sullivan and Jane Klein, Barbara Rodriguez, Sherry Bowman from the district have all been very supportive. And of course, many of you know where Sherry Bowman got all of her training at. But we also have our Panther Crew at Kennedy that has also, past and present, been very supportive for me. We have Sherry Tomlinson and Lena Cook here, who were APs for me. Currently, Tammy Davis and Darren DiGennaro that helped make good things happen. Frank Forster, Jennifer, his wife, who's also here, and sometime you need to see the very special shirt that she has. She didn't wear it tonight, so she didn't want to embarrass Carl, but she will have to show that to you. They have always done at Kennedy an amazing job of working with kids, and the student performance that you've seen from Kennedy because of their work has been just absolutely outstanding. That's why 16 years in a school because of the hard work that they've put in there. I recognize my BASSA friends that have been a part, and Gary, appreciate working with you. But most importantly, I want to recognize my very loving family and extended family, including Kristen Sorokin and Alex, and those that, some that could be, some that couldn't not be here, Natasha, Tabitha, and Manny, my son, Matt, who's here from Vero Beach, and his wife Clara. And if you need anything from Harbor Freight Hardware, that's a great place to go. But if you want to go further south and meet my other son, who's an FBI agent, you want to be real careful what you say and do. But we also have some grandchildren that I'm hoping to spend some extra time with, granddaughter Alyssa, and two grandsons that are just a little over two years old, Mark and Tristan, and hope to spend some extra time with them. And in particular, I thank my very wonderful, supportive, and beautiful wife, Sandy, who's everything to me. I just want to say thank you to all of you for allowing me to have the impact on so many students and staff over the time that I've been in education here in Brevard County. It's been wonderful. God's blessed me tremendously. Thank you.
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, we are also going to miss another one of our leaders, Mr. Carl Brown, when he retires in January. Please join me in saying thank you to Mr. Brown, the leader of the Blue Ribbon School that we all talked about, right? Thank you, Mr. Brown, for all that you have done for our students and for our districts. Will you please honor us with a few words?
Well, first of all, I don't have any grandkids, so I'm going to have a hard time topping Richard, but I'd like to thank Dr. Blackburn and the board, with the exception of Matt Susan, who was telling lies about me earlier. So I'd like to, in all seriousness, like to thank you for allowing me to be an administrator for 23 years in Brevard County. Back in '91, Sandy and I decided to come back to Brevard to raise our kids where we went to school, and it's been a great, great decision. I had a full head of hair then, and the kids were young, and so the rest is history. I do want to thank some people today. All the people at the back table, good friends over the years, but I want to make sure and recognize Jane Klein. She's been a good friend and a mentor over the years. Thank you. And the faculty, can't turn a look at them, but in fact, I'm coming up here now. But I couldn't ask for a better faculty, and the fact that they showed up tonight and surprised me just makes it extra special. They are what Manatee is, and I'm so proud of them. Couple other things, I want to thank the parents, particularly Tish Calvert. Nikki Hensley came tonight to represent the parents. When we talk about the Blue Ribbon, it's truly a community award, and it doesn't happen without the parents and the teachers together. Two more thank-yous I have. I want to thank my administrative team. I won't tell you what we call them individually. It's Christina Carver and Shannon Daly, and they've been keeping me in line for Shannon of five years and Christina this year, and especially over the last two or three months, they pretty much tell me what to do. And that's good. That's good for me. And the final person, like Richard has to thank Sandy, I have to thank my Sandy. She's presently in Seattle taking care of my mom, but without her, I couldn't have done this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, both of you, for everything that you've done for our children. Please welcome Mr. Chris Reed. Mr. Reed will be transferring from the position of principal at Ralph Williams Elementary School to the principal of Endeavor Elementary School effective tomorrow. We appreciate his commitment to the students of Brevard County, Mr. Reed.
Dr. Blackburn, members of the board, and Ms. Klein, I want to thank you for this opportunity. I don't get to share my long history right now with you, but I do get to share a short history that I've had. I can't tell you how excited I am for this opportunity. I had the privilege to work at Endeavor Elementary for five years, and I considered that time at Endeavor my leadership training ground. And I say leadership training ground because that's where I learned to become an effective teacher, an instructional leader, and a lead to teachers or other adults. I shared this news of this potential opportunity with my wife, and I had a smile from ear to ear. And she says to me, "Why are you crying? Is this terrible? What's wrong?" I said, "I'm not crying, honey. I'm excited." I cannot tell you how happy I am to have this opportunity. What I know is, high-impact learning starts with high-impact teaching, and what I've already heard and seen that's in place is a lot of high-impact teaching, and I'm looking forward to being on the team that's going to increase Endeavor Elementary so we can be proud of the accomplishments there. I also want to thank my wife, Renee, who's joining me here today as I start in this new endeavor. And I also want to thank Ms. Cope, whom I had the pleasure of working with when I was becoming an instructional leader at Endeavor Elementary. Again, I'm ecstatic. I'm ready for this opportunity, and I look forward to celebrating with everyone in this room when scores come out later in the year. Thank you.
Congratulations are also in order for Rebecca Teji on her reclassification of 10-month assistant principal at Madison Middle School to the position of 12-month assistant principal at Madison Middle School. Ms. Teji, did I say that correctly?
You did. Thank you. I'd like to thank the school board members, Dr. Blackburn, Dr. Sullivan, Barbara Rodriguez, Sherry Bowman, and of course, Sherry Tomlinson, for this opportunity to continue with the community in which I love so much. I can't wait for this opportunity to move forward into the 10-month position tomorrow. Oh, 12-month. Today was the end of the 10. Tomorrow's 12-month. I'm going to do both, though. I look forward to this, and I want to thank my family for being here and some of the people that I work with and have worked with in the past, I see here, and I look forward. And I look forward to it, and thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much for the administrative recommendations, Dr. Blackburn. I understand that we also have a Rockledge City Council member with us, who was a Kennedy Panther at one point, Mr. Forrester. Are you with us this evening? Thank you very much for joining us, sir. All right, we are now at public comments. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chairperson. No person may address or question board members individually. The board chairperson may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind that we often have children present and/or children viewing our board meetings, and we encourage an environment appropriate for their viewing. While no action will be taken this evening by the board on items raised in public discussion, board members may assist with connecting public speakers to district staff that can assist with concerns, respond in brief to comments made by speakers that require immediate clarification, request that response to specific speakers be placed on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." These responses will take place at the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name. We have one speaker signed up to speak this evening, Eric Lockshine, if you would please approach.
Which mic? Dear school board, my name is Eric Lockshine, and I am a computer programmer and also an A-plus volunteer for Bivard Public Schools. I'm also the father of a senior at Rockledge High School. Go Raiders! I want to take this opportunity to explain to you what the ISC Squared Safe and Secure Online Program is and how it can benefit Bivard Public Schools. The Center for Cyber Safety and Education is a nonprofit charitable trust that aims to empower the public to secure their online life by supporting cybersecurity education and awareness in the community. This is in part accomplished through the Safe and Secure Online Program. The Safe and Secure Online Program is an initiative that brings volunteers like me into the community to teach cyber safety to children, parents, and senior citizens. I'm speaking to you today to offer my volunteer services to teach the children of Bivard County Public Schools to stay safe online. Topics covered in the children's presentation include cyberbullying, online identity and image protection, social networking safety, and computer safety. This presentation has been created by the center with the help of the world's leading cybersecurity professionals, the certified global members of ISC Squared. The presentation is delivered via PowerPoint and is approximately one hour long. The children's presentation is primarily geared toward eleven-to-fourteen-year-olds, although it can be taught to children of any age and any knowledge level. The Center for Cyber Safety and Education is partnered with Paus Incorporated to produce a new character named Dr. Cybrina, C-I-S-S-P. Dr. Cybrina is a friend of a famous cat by the name of Garfield. Together, both Dr. Cybrina and Garfield teach Normal the Kitten about cyber safety. I would be happy to bring this amazing program to any school in the Bivard County Public School system. For more information about the center and the Safe and Secure Online Program, please visit safensecureonline.org. Please get with me after the meeting if you are interested in bringing this program to Bivard County Public Schools. I have some homemade volunteer business cards that I can hand out. Together, we can make a difference in helping the community stay safe online. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lockshine. If you would connect with Dr. Theddy in the back of the room, she will gladly take your information, and she can work with our ET folks and see what we can do. Thank you, and thank you for your volunteer. That moves us into the consent agenda, Dr. Blackburn.
There are seven agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Does any board member wish to pull any consent item? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by the entire team. I'm gonna give it to Ms. Duskovich, because she's weighing in for the first time this evening. So the motion has been made by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five zero. We will move on to the action agenda, Dr. Blackburn.
There are two items for your consideration. The first one is item G-16 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five zero, Dr. Blackburn.
The next one is item G-17 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Craig. Any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five zero. We will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Blackburn?
Mrs. Belford, there is only one item under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss this item?
Yes, I do have a question.
Mr. Ziegler.
While I'm very familiar with Pineapple Cove, and they've been doing a great job, I'm curious if they've identified a location. Is it an existing location?
So for sake of recording, Mr. Ziegler, if I may repeat what Mrs. Archer has just said, they are adding the high school to the same existing location, so they're gonna be expanding at that current location.
They're gonna be expanding, okay. Thank you. I was curious how they were gonna pull that off in short order.
Yes. I actually had the opportunity to sit in on their interview. Great team they have.
Yes.
Doing good things. Ms. Duskovich.
Is there, Ms. Archer, you might know the answer to this, is there any potential for, from what I've heard, they are only going to, they only plan to be the size to meet their current eighth-grade class to roll up to be freshmen? Is there any potential for expansion or growth? Because they are located kind of in a Palm Bay, West Melbourne-y kind of area. Is there any potential for them to be larger than just the size of their current eighth grade?
No, they are going to roll out their high school one grade level at a time. So their intent is to have their eighth grade roll into ninth or ninth and the tenth, and so for the next four years afterwards, they will add a grade level until they reach capacity.
Do you happen to know their capacity? I'm sorry.
They have about seventy-five students in their eighth grade.
Okay, so not entirely too large. Thank you.
No.
No, I was just going to kind of expand on what you were saying. They actually were very intentional about only rolling those eighth graders into ninth grade because it's such a jump from middle to high school. So they were very clear that they wanted to get good at high school before they took on too much, because they wanted to really ensure that they could maintain the integrity of their program.
Also additionally, going back to Mr. Ziegler's question, they're gonna start with modulators before they actually build. So they're going, since they're slowing, growing slowly, they are doing that so they can save up to design their building appropriately.
Any additional discussion?
Okay. Then, we are at the Board Member Reports and Discussion Point section. In addition to discussion points, I request that board members please include any information requests to be placed on board-assigned tasks during this time as well.
Board reports, discussion?
Mr. Ziegler. Was there anyone else? No, I think it's only you. Okay.
So this is gonna be basically leading into a request for some data that I requested about a year and a half ago. And some people might say, "Well, Andy, you're maybe beating a dead horse." And I thought about it, and I said, "You know, maybe there's an educational moment here." Because over the years, I have pursued many things, to the point where I'm sure board members were saying, "All right, Andy, enough." But as you're gonna find out, and as some of you already know, a lot of that has basically manifested itself into some great things for the school district. And I say that because we have a philosophy as board members that we vote on something and we support it going forward. And I do believe in that, but I do believe that there are some exceptions. And so I want to share with you some things that have transpired before this board, some during this board, kind of as an educational moment. I want to get to that request that I still have information on, because as you know, pretty much everything I've done has been to support our employees. So I've had some successes, and I've actually, I'm gonna discuss what I think was a failure of not being persistent enough on an issue. As you know, I've championed healthcare centers for a long time, ever since two thousand and nine. I saw a presentation at FSBA by Willis on the topic, and I got very excited. I requested that we look at those, and just so the listening audience knows, we have a consultant that we pay a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to guide us, who should basically analyze anything we ask for. For some reason, I couldn't get any traction on healthcare centers. So I figured more research is needed, and I kept digging in. In the process, I was also looking at ways to save money with pharmacy, but I had a lot to learn there. All of a sudden, with no notice, on one of our agendas in the year two thousand and eleven, there was an item requesting that we approve a contract to go from Walgreens Health Initiative to Cigna. Out of the blue, unfortunately, a culture back then of last-minute stuff that we had to make a decision on right away, and we had no choice. Thankfully, with Dr. Blackburn giving us advance notice of important things coming up, those things rarely ever happen anymore. A much better way to operate. While the last-minute item couldn't be delayed, I was curious how it came about, especially since I was focusing on healthcare, and I never saw the bid come through or have any awareness of it, and I found out, was told it was a piggyback from the county. And I'm telling you this because I want you to use this as an educational moment to think about things that you feel in your heart and you're passionate about, and that you get, that you look into thoroughly. So I asked for the county's bid, because I wanted to see this piggyback. It took three weeks and repetitive requests to get the bid, to find out there was no pharmacy on the county's bid. Perplexed, I was curious, how in the world did we award a contract that wasn't bid and wasn't a piggyback? What I eventually found out was is that on our third-party administrative contract, there was a clause in the front that said that the contract was strictly TPA and pharmacy was a set aside, and that we had the right to negotiate with the award of that TPA bid for pharmacy. And that's what staff did. They negotiated a contract, unbeknownst to anybody. It was, it did not go through legal, and it came to us, it was not bid. Quickly researched our bidding on pharmacy and found out we hadn't bid in seven years. In two thousand, in December two thousand and eleven, I brought that to the board, and rightfully so, they gave direction to staff to go out and bid pharmacy. I do believe, and I think the board believes, that for competition and transparency's sake, we should always bid things out. I also asked that we include pharmacy rebates in that bid, because we weren't receiving them. In the middle of two thousand and twelve, I asked for the status on that bid and found out that our comm benefits director decided we didn't need to go out on bid, so they chose not to bid it. I don't see where that was their place, because the board gave specific direction. Superintendent at the time didn't seem to care, unfortunately, but then the board directed that that go out on bid. In two thousand and thirteen, it was awarded to Cigna, and as you know, the history from that, is that our first year, we reaped one point eight million dollars in rebate revenue, and have been doing so every year since. My persistence on that paid off. Continuing back to healthcare centers, the board finally gave in, probably said, "All right, Andy, if we analyze healthcare centers, maybe Andy'll go away." So comm benefits director got right up here and says, "Okay, we'll analyze healthcare centers," and said, "Would you like to analyze the expensive brick-and-mortar model? Or would you like to analyze the urgent care model that doesn't cost us anything?" And a very brilliant board member chimed in and said, "Oh, we don't want to be in the brick-and-mortar business." And I was thinking, "We're the largest brick-and-mortar company in the county. What do you mean, we don't want to be in the brick-and-mortar business?" And so direction was given to staff to look at the urgent care model, which I don't believe has saved us any money. In two thousand and fourteen, I asked for justification of why we had a comm benefits department and a risk management department. A lot of duplication of function in those two departments. Most organizations' best practice is that those two departments are aligned. Seeing no justification, the superintendent aligned the two departments, and that's what we have now under Mark Langdorff. With Mark's great guidance, he saw the value in analyzing our healthcare centers. He had a presentation made to the board, John Misty, you were part of the board at the time, and came to us and gave a presentation on how this would be a great move for us, and it would save us about nine million dollars over the course of the cost avoidance over the first three years. I noticed in their comments to us that they said that they've been making this recommendation for five years. And so if you recall, I asked them, "Well, why didn't you make the recommendation to us?" And they said very simply, they were told, if they made the recommendation, they would no longer be our consultant. So needless to say, this should have been done a long time ago. I believe that that delay of one year of not bidding the pharmacy cost us one point eight million, and our delaying on analyzing our healthcare centers, which we now know is successful and our employees love, has cost us at least nine million. Cumulatively, if we would have kept going forward and started these sooner, I think that's about fifteen million to the good we could have been if we would have looked at things earlier. My point being is there are times when you all want to analyze things, and I think it's important that we analyze data. We think we do a very good job with that now, since Dr. Blackburn has been on board. I don't think there's ever been a time we've asked for data that hasn't been analyzed. Which you may be saying, "Well, why has it been a year and a half, Andy, for the data that you're about to re-ask for?" And there's valid reason for it, and I'm okay with it. Now, not being persistent enough, if you could pass those packets out, I'm passing out to you some emails, they're public record. I know the people have pulled them before. I know some of them have been sent out to people during the time. Don't get nervous, these are EDR-related, but these are things that have already been passed out to the public and not relevant to anything that's going on right now. So you will see in there an email that the board received with talking points about how great EDR was. I immediately sent out an email to the superintendent asking that that software be pulled from the agenda. Now, be honest with you, I forgot about all this. And a very astute reporter for Florida Today, Carolyn Glenn, I guess had watched the meeting where we approved that software and asked me some questions I couldn't answer. And so I tried to look into what it was, and I couldn't find on my calendar a meeting she was asking about, and so I dug through emails and then had this revelation of all of this work that I had done fighting the CDR software. You will see questions to staff, you'll see where engaged staff in research, which you'll find at the end of the packet, which is also sent out to community members who requested why we would spend so much on that software, about what other districts have paid in trials and tribulations that they have had. The day, you also see an email from staff to the board saying that Andy's not on board, and that they're gonna have an emergency meeting, which is what the question I was asked about, as to see if they can get Andy on board. And that was the day of the meeting where we approved this. And I admit, for two primary points, I was convinced to vote for that software. One was that the cost would double, which we've heard from other board members from the previous superintendent. And the other one was the timeline, is that if we didn't do this right away, against, up against the wall, a terrible culture back then that I didn't like, that we wouldn't be able to implement this on the school year boundary to get the software rolling. At that point, by board philosophy, I should have supported the purchase going forward. I did not. Additional emails will show that I asked for a meeting to see the software twice. The first time was brief, as it was not yet live, the second was in August two thousand and thirteen, which was very long and detailed, including- was very long and detailed, included staff members, experts in their field, when their related portion of the software was demonstrated to me. You'll see the details of that agenda, because I was, I was really concerned, and I wasn't letting go at this point. Very convincing, all appeared to be well. Following that, I was asking for reports on implementation, one of which is attached, there are many more that have been provided. Eventually, I gave up on my concerns. As we know now, we may be in a better place if I did not end my pursuit of my concerns. Yet by board philosophy and our segregation of duties, I should not have gone beyond that point of voting to do anything other than to support the decision. I wish I had stuck to it and kept digging in, because maybe we wouldn't be at the place we are now. But, make it clear, I fought that all the way up through the vote and beyond the vote. Board members, my point of this is that you have a duty to the voters to vet out your concerns until you are satisfied that the concern is a dead issue, and usually by vote, or by data showing us that, okay, there's not merit to what we were looking at. And sometimes that happens, sometimes we have a thought, we look at the data, and we say, "You know what, we're doing everything great, and let's move forward as usual." And that may very well be the situation with the data that I'm gonna ask for. As you know, over the years, I have had concern about the way we treat employees who are accused of things in the classroom primarily, and looking for a better way to support our employees. I understand that we have to err on the side of caution of how we proceed, which in my opinion, does not show employees that we support them as well as we can. I understand it boils down to risk. So I asked for the data on how many employees are removed from their position, put on administrative leave with pay pending investigation. I found it hard to believe that we don't have that data, but I understand unless, because of our systems are antiquated, unless we collect it along the way, it's not easy to produce. I understand that. So I asked for the data to be tracked over the following year, so we can find is, is there really a reason for us to be so hard on our employees? Or is it rare that any of these materialize as a, as a real problem and risk to students, that maybe we could come up with a solution to better support our employees? Which is my hope, it may, the data may prove otherwise. Oddly enough, this is similar to what happened to me. Well, I heard from employees that they are removed without knowing why. I had always assumed they were told and allowed to defend the accusations in their accusations. In my situation, I was told their accusations, and that I would be able to address the accusations and know the accuser. I was never told. Board members, BPS employees, this should concern you all, that you don't have that opportunity, and I've heard that from employees, but I never really believed that they didn't have an opportunity. Now, now I wonder. Therefore, I'm going to be more adamant about this data be provided to the board, so that we can find out how often is there really a risk? How often is that employee permanently removed? And if rarely, is there something we can do to truly show, show our employees that, as we say, we, we respect them, we value them, and we support them? As a minimum, analyzing this shows that we care about looking for ways to better support our employees. So, Dr. Blackburn, I'm just gonna ask if you could please get us that data that I asked for a year and a half ago. Hopefully, that information has been tracked over the past year. And either one or two things, we're gonna find that everything is being done appropriately because there is a high level of risk, or maybe we can find a way to show our employees that we support them better. Thank you.
Any other board members have board reports? Dr. Blackburn, do you have a superintendent's report? There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.